Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our regular board meeting on May 16th, 2024 at 6:00 PM at the Estill County Board of Education Boardroom on 253 Main Street in Urban, Kentucky. At this time, I would like to call our meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone and we start by saying our pledge. So if some of these boys and girls can help us lead the pledge, that would be wonderful.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone that there's a sign-in at the entrance to the boardroom. Mr. Brock, do we have any revisions to this agenda?
We do not.
Okay. Moving forward, item number three on our agendas, we have presentations and we have South Urban Early Learning Center here to present tonight.
So, thank you for having us. We thought that we would tell you a little bit about what we learned in preschool. So, we wanted to tell you a little bit about what we learn in preschool. Preschool has standards just like every other grade does. So, we use something called creative curriculum and that is units. Each, we have 11 units throughout the year. We're in our water unit right now, which is really fun. We had water day with that. The kids have learned if things sink or float. They've learned about the water cycle. But we didn't bring the water unit with us because we only have nine classrooms. So, we have nine classrooms represented here. And we're going to just start with our very first unit, which is beginning of the year. So, for beginning of the year, we have someone from Ms. Muncy's class and Ms. Adams is going to help her tell, here, you can take this. Tell them your name.
My name is Harlow.
Ms. Muncy wanted me to let everyone know how sorry she is. She couldn't be here this evening. But her oldest baby is having a senior night tonight, so we're really happy for her to be with her family. And we're also very proud to have Ms. Harlow here to help us.
Can you tell them about our three Vs that we say every morning, our expectations?
They all be kind. Responsible. Safe.
Ms. Muncy always has her kiddos talk about what those things look like in our building.
Can you tell us the way that we can be kind?
Be kind to our friends.
That we are responsible.
Stay in line.
And can you tell us the way that we're safe?
Stay with our teachers.
Alright, the next unit that we do is the pets unit. So, we have from Ms. Cooper's class for pets.
My name is Charlie.
Anaya.
Alright, here's your poster. There's a, they are telling you all about pets. Charlie, what would you like for them to know about pets?
Dogs.
Pets are?
Dogs.
They could be dogs. What else could they be?
Fish.
They could be. What do you know about pets?
They're cute.
They are cute. What do pets do?
They can run really fast.
What was something fun that came to your classroom?
My, my dog.
So, we were able to bring in an actual pet for our pets unit.
Buddy.
We want to involve them. Come on over. They want us to doctor their pets, I think. Is our trees unit and we have?
Cash.
During this unit, we learned the parts of a tree. All the students got to come up and put a part of the tree on and label it. Ms. Cash, tell them some parts of the tree.
Roots. Trunk. Branches. Leaves. Flowers.
We have from Ms. Vaughn's class. We're going to skip the lady. She was going to do the clothing unit. If she comes in, we'll put her. Ms. York's time, buildings. So, we have a buildings unit and they learn how, about the buildings and the different structures in Urban.
West Urban. Fire tason. Hit the hot. Turt house. Esser things. Day tail. A biz. A new face of this. A disaster. A tens.
So, in the buildings unit, they learn all different types of buildings in the community and around the world. Our unit was exercise.
Ashton.
This is Ashton. We had something really fun happen during our exercise unit. We had, do you remember who came to our room?
A boss.
The boss, the sheriff, came to our school. And he taught us some really cool things. Do you remember what he taught us? How to what?
Ang bell.
He taught us about the kettlebell?
Exercise. Healthy food. Exercise. Healthy body.
So, he's going to demonstrate some of the stuff that the sheriff taught us. He taught us how to do sit-ups. It was hard. But we learned that, and here's the sheriff on it, that healthy food and working out gives us a healthy body.
Can you tell them your name?
Maverick. Brilliantly.
And they were learning about gardening and you guys actually planted something, didn't you? What did you plant?
Carrots.
And what did you do to plant those carrots? Do you remember the process that you went through? What did you do?
What do you do with your finger?
Dig a hole. Seeds. Water. The side.
And then, when you planted your carrots, you got to watch them grow, right? Thank you, guys. We did the insect unit. And so, can you say your name? This is Zaya and Presley is here too, to help us. So, we learned different things about insects. Zaya, do you want to talk about them? So, we learned different things that insects have. They have three body parts, six legs, and two antenna. And we made 3D insects. So, Zaya is holding up her 3D insect that she made. Do you want to tell them what you used? She used Play-Doh and pipe cleaners and googly eyes and Q-tips to make her insect. And we learned the life cycles of insects and the different types of insects and they helped draw insects and learn lots of different things.
My name is Amber.
Amber. We had the wheels unit. So, we learned about all the different ways wheels are helpful to us and different vehicles that have wheels. We split the class into three teams and each team designed and built a car. We had some work from Ms. Tanya's dad with the wheels. And then, to finish the unit, we had a big race. Do you want to tell them the car that you go through? Which is, I bet those things are cool. Green Lamborghini.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Oh, somebody else? Is there someone else?
Sorrel. Water. Sunlight. They need it to grow. Thank you. Trees have roots. Trees have leaves. Trees has flowers. Trees have branches. Thank you, guys.
Okay, Ms. Hall, thank you very much for the boys and girls coming. It was awesome. So, next on our agenda, we have our student technology leadership program recognition. Thank you all. Thank you. You're so cute.
Adorable.
Thank you all for speaking.
So, the Student Technology Leadership Program is a program that was developed by KDE several years ago, basically for STEM purposes, for increasing technology with all students, grades K through 12. As of right now, our, we do have a program at Estill Springs. We have just developed a new program at West Urban. Sort of started this year. We're going full force with it next year. We even had some students from Estill Springs that are now at the middle school. They still wanted to do it. So, Ms. Rose over at Estill Springs said, hey, I'll take care of these three kiddos from the middle school. And then, we even had some from the high school through the ATC, through our technology teacher, Jason Rose. So, the culmination of the STLP project or program is you go to either regional competitions or even the state competition. And so, this year, we actually had some of our kiddos get first and second place, which is pretty amazing. So, first, I'm going to talk about the ATC simply because I don't know if the, I know Ms. Covey's not here. Skylar, are you here? Skylar, there you are, bud. So, Kyla Covey, who is our own board member, Brian Covey's daughter, she had a prior engagement, got to the competition late for a good reason, went to the competition and she participated in what's called Girls Who Code, where they actually have to answer a bunch of questions about the, you know, you all think about hackers on TV, that type of thing, where you're actually typing out all this gibberish and it turns into something. She actually did that, ended up leaving because she just said, you know, I did it. She got first place. Didn't even know it. And then, they announced it. So, and they would not, regardless of how much we protested, would not give us her trophy without her being there. So, this is Kyla's trophy. I want to make sure that her dad gives it to her. So, I was going to give it to her tonight, but she and her dad are at the senior softball thing tonight. So, very important for her to go to that. So, you know, congratulations to Kyla on that. Then, in the tech bowl, come here, come on, Skylar. I want you to explain to everybody what tech bowl is.
So, so, the way, I'm actually the captain, or I was the captain of the academic team at Poughkeepsie High School. And I understood the tech bowl was like basically that, but with the technology topics that are always going around my brain. So, I decided to give it a shot. It was very close, but ended up winning first at the state competition.
So, you know, this is one of those times. Now, Skylar has already received his trophy, so we don't have anything. So, he's already got his trophy. But this is a great, you know, great way to show you that this coordination of the ATC where we have Estill and Powell Kids has really benefited us, you know. And so, you know, if you want to move here, we'll let you.
I might be around.
And so, next, from Estill Springs, we And so, next, uh, from Estill Springs, uh, we had, uh, a couple of different, uh, showings. Uh, the first would, uh, for second place, I'll start from that, from second place on Spiro Hero, we have Piper Beard and Emma Blitzen. Are they here?
Yeah, Piper is.
Come on, come on, Piper.
Okay, I just want to say something about this competition, cause it's in Piper Nose. So this is one of STLP's oldest competitions, so it's about twenty years old. It's from the beginning. So it's, people get really good in these districts and then they are just, they win every single year. So we started it and they did it last year and we did it place. And I was like, you know what, it's okay, every year we'll, we'll just keep trying, we'll get better. And, and that's what we did. And so we went back and we got second. They only do first and second, but that's a huge deal because there were over a hundred teams that competed against these girls and they got second place. And like, At Rutt, what he's saying is not, he's not downplaying it. At Rutt, that competition, I think what they, they said that we had like twenty-two thousand kids there competing that day and there's only so many competitions, so it's really impressive. Now, these are team competitions, so they, they get a trophy today because they got one like this on competition day and we took it and kept it at Springs.
So, what we did, we wanted the kiddos to have their own trophy, so we, I think so, Piper, congratulations. I want to say something real quick. When we were getting, we had to leave early that morning to get up there and all the kids are, at Springs was standing out front. You know, and I'm there to give them their motivational speech. So, I basically told them, I want you to crush your enemies. I want every other student there crying because you beat them so badly. Did I not? Because, you know, my mentality is I want our kiddos to know, I don't want them to, I'm not critically correct. I don't want them to go and have a good time. I want them to go, they're smart. Our kiddos are awesome. And I wanted them to go and show how great they were. And they took it to heart, especially in the follow the line, uh, the line follow challenge, where not only did we place second, we also placed first. We swept the entire category. So, uh, for second place, um, for line follow, we have Garrett Mays, Levi Campbell, and Jordan Sapples.
We have some of them here.
Who, which ones I got here?
Garrett and Levi.
Garrett, come on, come on, boys. So, what do y'all want to tell everybody what follow the line challenge is? I'll tell you what, you know, first place, get up here too. We got Hudson, we got Noah. So, I want one of you guys to tell, cause they're hearing line follow challenge. You're like, well, they do, they put a line on the, you just walk on it? No. Let them know how cool you guys are.
And hard.
Yes.
The line follow challenge is where you have to build a robot, code it, and then get it to follow this white line on a track. And you try to code it to go as fast as possible. And if you get it to go fast, then you place in the fastest time wins.
What y'all gotta understand, the line that they're following is not a straight line. It's this way and this way and this way and sharp curve. They have no idea what this line is gonna look like. It's just completely random every single year. They just have to guess. And so, they've got these little robots and these dudes, I mean, that kill it. And Hudson, you were on the first place team last year, right? Were you, either of you two?
All of you were.
I mean, it's just, they take no prisoners when they go to the same competition. And of course, we'll make sure to get the, uh, the trophies to the other students as well, but just amazing that these kids, with, uh, instruction from, uh, Mr. and Ms. Rose are going into a very tough competition and just doing what they need to do. You know, without, without fear, without hesitation, and they're, you know, coming home with, out of twenty-two thousand kids. You know, not all twenty-two placed in those particular categories, of course, but, you know, you have hundreds. And Estill County goes and takes a showing, so we're very proud of them.
Thank you all for being here. Congratulations. Okay, next on our agenda, we have our Skills USA competition. Was someone gonna speak about that?
Some of you don't know me, I'm probably called on the diesel instructor at the ATC. I'm also the Skills USA advisor. Uh, these two guys that we have up here with us today, Ian Rowland, he's a Hester County student and Skylar has been up here before. Uh, he's a Powell County student. Uh, both seniors that competed in Skills USA this year. Some of you that might not know what Skills is, uh, it is a student-led organization inside of our school. So, uh, kinda like the, the big ones that you all might know is FFA, FBLA. Uh, inside of our school, we have our diesel students, um, IT students, industrial maintenance, and soon-to-be welding students. Uh, all of our Skills USA. So in that club, we do a lot of, uh, just learning in our trades, but we also do, uh, just workplace skills. So, uh, resumes, job interviews, uh, just being a good employee. So, uh, this year, we went, we took, uh, ten to, or actually thirteen regionals. We competed at United North. Uh, all programs competed in that. We placed in all of our programs. Um, in diesel, we got first, second, and third. Um, so we swept the contest in diesel. And IT, we swept all our contests in two. Skylar won, uh, Powell was there, that was previously mentioned. Uh, and then a few others. I don't have the list in front of me, but, uh, it's posted and the names you'll have to go along and see yet. Um, so we, we won, won the region, uh, qualified for state. It was in Louisville. So we took ten to Louisville and, uh, we placed in all our contests there. Um, Ian, I'm gonna let him talk in just a minute, uh, he placed first in the state in diesel. He continued on to nationals and, uh, Skylar, uh, got first in the state in, uh, IT service, right? IT services. So he'll be, continue on to nationals. Uh, that's gonna be in June. Uh, we, we traveled to Atlanta, Georgia, probably to compete. So I'm gonna let the guys talk a little bit about, about their contests, about their programs, and just themselves in general.
My name is Ian Rowland. I competed in diesel, as you just said. Uh, I've been in the program for three years, since it started. Uh, I competed in Skills USA for two, this is my second year competing. Uh, I currently work at a truck stop in Richmond as a diesel technician and tire tech. Uh, so in the diesel contest, uh, you go and have a much bigger station set up. And, uh, an example would be like an electrical trainer, where you have to build an electrical circuit and add function and test, uh, certain things across the circuit, such as voltage drop or, uh, resistance across a lot. And then you have, uh, other ones as well, like, uh, inspections. And, uh, this year, there was an inspection on a backhoe. The competition was hosted by Boy Cat Builder, which is also a big program for once a while.
Okay, so, uh, I'm Skylar Johnson. As you said, I'm, um, I'm an IT student from Powell County. And, um, I've been, I've been in the IT program for two years and skills for both of those. So, last year, I went to the regional and state competition and placed second in IT. And then I came back, stayed in regional for this one, and then I, I placed first. So, over that time, I basically, I, I learned a lot about computers and how to work on them and the software. Uh, I can't thank, I instructed Mr. Jason Rose enough. He's a great mentor. And the competition, it's, uh, it's kinda like we have a separate module, so it's about six separate sections. You have five that are performance-based, so you have IT problems on a Windows computer or a Mac. And then you have to fix those, prove you fixed it, and document your findings. And then there's also a red portion, which is like the CompTIA A+ exam, one of the premier, uh, IT certifications. I went and just passed it this past week, so it was tough as nails, but I'm glad we pulled through with the encouragement of all these, all these great fellows who have Skills USA, so it was a great time.
Congratulations. Great job. Thank you, Ms. Combs and Mr. Cottle for being here. Um, next, I think we have a few people that are here waiting on a retiree recognition. Mr. Brock, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Uh, we'll, uh, recognize and give everybody a, an opportunity, principles and stuff to say a few words about them and then we have a gift for them over here. Uh, we're holding it early this year, um, because, uh, some of our retirees will put their date down as June 1 and we wanted them to have the opportunity to be here because if we hold it in June, they can't be back on campus for a certain number of days or it messes with their retirement, so. Uh, pleased to have everybody with us tonight. Every one of these people will be a loss to our district. Uh, and I've even told several of them they weren't allowed to retire. They didn't listen to me. Uh, I'll tell them again tonight, I don't think you can withdraw your paperwork and come back. It'll be okay. We'd be lucky to have you all. But thank you all for your, for your service to Estill County and to our students. Uh, and once your days are complete, you're welcome back anytime to be a part, uh, to sub whatever it is that you want to do. You always have a place in Estill County, so.
Well, we actually have fifteen people that are retiring from our district. And we are going to recognize four of them tonight because they are, um, here in person with us. I looked at the years of service for each of these. We have one person with twenty-nine years, another with thirty-two, another with thirty-three, and then our fourth one here had twenty-seven. So we've got a hundred and twenty-one years of experience and expertise that is gonna be leaving our district. Um, it's a bittersweet moment for us because we are very happy that they are going a different path in their life and getting to enjoy some of the things that they didn't get to always enjoy because they were working. But it's bittersweet for us because we're gonna miss them dearly. We also want to, um, recognize that the families that are here with them, you sacrificed a lot as well to allow them to love on our children, to allow them to help make sure our children are fed and that they are at school and that they are learning while they are there. So not only do we thank them for our, their service to our district, but we thank you for allowing us to have as many years as we got to have with them. So the first up is Ms. Martin. Ms. Arvin, do you want to come and say a little something?
I'm not sure she's gonna let me stand next to her after field day, but I know after all those years, you know what it's like. I was blessed to be Deanna's principal for only a year and a half. But we graduated high school and gone through a lot of mile markers about the same time. I'm gonna tell you that we definitely lost a fantastic teacher. She goes at everything with dedication and love. And I just so appreciate her support and guidance as we were working through our restructuring. She was definitely a blessing and I cannot thank you enough, Ms. Deanna. And I wish you the very best and I'm gonna be dancing with you soon.
That is for Ms. Deanna. That's hers.
Oh, we're gonna take pictures with one?
We have a prop for you. Hide the name though, cause it's not your name on there.
And now you get your real one.
Yeah, and they are cloths with their names and their years of service to our district, so.
Would you just want me to say my own?
I'll talk if you want me to talk.
Well, I would love to say, I have spent thirty-two years in Estill County schools and I have loved absolutely every moment of them. A few of those years were spent away working as a state consultant. But the thing that always amazed me the most, and a few of, of you, a few of you have probably heard me say this. Everything that I needed to know in that consultant position, I actually learned right in Estill County. Because we are a phenomenal district, full of great things and promise. And I've loved every moment and I will continue to be here, doing whatever is needed for our schools. I love you all and I thank you.
I just want to add that when she talks about Ms. Martin never stopping, this lady never stops either. She's like a hundred and ten miles an hour in everything that she does. So we appreciate your service to the district and we are gonna miss you. Ms. Mullins, do you want to come up? Next is Kim Plowman, who is a teacher at Estill Springs, so I'm gonna let Ms. Mullins say a little bit about her.
Okay, um, Kim came to me a while back to talk to me about retiring. And we had a lot of tears and then we hugged it out because I really didn't want to let her go. Um, but Kim has served a lot of students with a lot of heart for twenty-seven years. You have been a target with Serbin and Estill Springs. Uh, Kim and I have been together for eleven years now and I wouldn't trade them for, for anything. She has been a phenomenal teacher and a phenomenal friend and a phenomenal cheerleader for both staff and students. Uh, she has taught first and second grade during her entire career. So, I have already lined Kim up for an upcoming maternity leave next year, so we've already brought her back, right? So that was the, that was the agreement, that I would let her go, only if she would go on and agree to, uh, come back and help. We know she won't be far from the building. She won't be far from our heart. You know, I love you very much. And we appreciate everything you've done, not only for our school, but for each of us in this world.
This next one, I'm gonna try to get through without crying because I can't look at her, cause she's already got tears flowing. Um, it's our food service director, Ms. Belinda Puckett. She has been with us for twenty-nine years. Um, she is our friend. She is a very loyal colleague to our district. She makes sure everybody gets fed every day and that we follow all of the guidelines so that we don't get in trouble. She, um, has taken a lot of complaints when choices were made that were beyond her control. Um, but she did it all with grace and we're gonna miss her tremendously. But we wish her all of the best in life after her time here and anytime she wants to come back, she's allowed, after the three months. Come on up, Belinda.
She retired last minute, so her real one is not in yet. Yes, she did.
No, I'm like the school board, um, twenty-nine years, you gotta miss her while I retire. I worked in Lexington, had two, two small kids.
Four, six, and I was in the ballroom, but her days, so I'm very appreciative of the board. It's been a wonderful, I couldn't ask for a better place to work, and we're godly people, I can work with some really great people. So, I thank Mr. Rock for trusting me, and to get a choice to choose.
There's always a choice, you did a, you did a great job.
Thank you all so much, thank you.
We have other retirees that's not here tonight, and I'll just briefly say again, each one of these people no doubt have a heart for students and a heart for Estill County, they will be missed, but they're welcome back anytime, like I said, they'll always have a place here. So, thank you all for your service.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Wilson, keep them cows under control.
I try to take care of it.
See ya.
I'll take care of it.
Mr. Cottle, thank you, you're awesome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, fellers. Y'all did a fine job.
Yep, proud of you.
All right, we've had Mass Exodus, so. There's a few of us left. So, we're gonna move on through the rest of the agenda, and we'll. She'll be right back. You'll need to hold up. Miss Samples had to step out for just a moment, she'll be right back. Um, so, we have, um, some action items. Um, do you think we should wait for her? Give us just a second, um, we're gonna wait for her to come right back, so. Probably need to. I'd like to call for a motion, Teresa's, Tammy, and Carrie. And we'll be back in about five minutes. Thank you.
Motion to reopen our meeting. Tammy Hardy makes a motion, Sheila Samples makes a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Our meeting is back, um, open. Um, next on our agenda, we have action items. First on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of some out of state trips for the basketball team to travel to Indiana.
Yes, it'd be a trip for them to travel to Indiana during the, uh, I can't remember, it's the summer, it's-
December.
December, early for Christmas.
They're part of that Hoosiers, this is for the Hoosiers. So, they got selected to go play in the Hoosiers gym. Uh, Mr. Moore contacted me about it, gosh, I guess two, three months ago now. And, uh, I think it's a great opportunity for our kids and it's my recommendation that we approve out of state travel.
Okay, I need a, oh-
I'm sorry, I will ask, do they have to, can we also, cause they're for Gatlinburg in December? Can we approve it all in one thing, or do we have to wait till December to approve that one for Gatlinburg?
It has to be approved as it is on the agenda.
Okay.
But we'll add that one later.
Okay.
That's in the matter.
So, I need a motion to approve the boys' basketball team to travel to Indiana. Carrie Smallwood makes a motion, Sheila Samples makes a motion, do we have any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote.
And I think the reason this one's on here now so early is they had to know by-
They had to book it.
They had to actually notify them officially.
Yeah.
Yes, and it has to be, it was sometime coming up pretty quick.
Ten to the one.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Next, we have consideration for approval of our food services agreements and we have our community eligibility provision intent to participate.
So, this is just where every student eats breakfast and lunch free, we have to approve that, every year is my recommendation to approve.
I need a motion to approve our community eligibility provision intent to participate food service agreement requirement. And Sheila Samples makes a motion, Tammy Hardy makes a second, do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote at this time, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries.
Okay.
Um, next, we have our NSLP indirect cost, would you like to discuss that, Mr. Brock?
Yeah, so this is an approval for the district to, uh, recover some funds from the food service program. Uh, as indirect costs, things will be like fringe, you know, good salaries, some of those things that we can recover. Uh, we have to approve it in order to be able to recover some of those costs, it's my recommendation that we approve.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the NSLP indirect cost. Um, Tammy Hardy makes a motion, Sheila Samples makes a second, do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote. Next, we have consideration for approval of the 2024-2025 fuel bid.
This is actually just opening to that four bid and then we would cut back, we would advertise and we'd come back in June and actually approve.
Okay, so this is a motion to open the bid for our fuel. Do we have a motion? Sheila Samples makes a motion, Carrie Smallwood makes a second, do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, next, we have consideration for approval for FY25 tentative budget.
So, this is just a continuation of what we've approved before, we've done some more work on it, we've had, uh, representative from KDC down to help us look at it as well. Uh, Angie and I looked at it again today, there's still some things out there that's unknown, there's some bills that we're gonna have to try to estimate for June. There's, uh, gonna look through some potential percentage of raises and stuff that we could do this year with additional allocation to the SEEK funding. And then we gotta try to figure out our best block funds, who's going to be and get that in there as well. We will say at this point contingency is up to 1.4 for right now, from 1.1 back, I think in January. Uh, so, it's looking good, but we just need to go ahead and approve a tentative budget, we'll have a detailed one next month, which will include salary schedules, any potential raises and stuff like that.
Oh. Okay. I need a motion to approve the FYI 25 tentative budget. Sheila Samples makes a motion, do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second, do I have any discussion? If not, I need a motion, or I need a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote. Um, next on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of a board member's resignation. Mr. Brock, would you like to discuss that, or would you like for me?
Uh, well, we just had a, a situation where we have a board member that's decided that they need to resign and if you want to read, I'm sure there'd be up a letter there. Uh, it does require a vote by the board, uh, to open up a new spot and then there's a process. I've already sent some documents to, uh, Ms. Isford, uh, about that and first thing we have to do is have the vacancy and that's what this process is.
Okay. Um, so, I can, um, share that we have a letter of recog- of resignation from Mr. O'Brien Covey. And we will make that part of the minutes of our meeting. And, um, I need a motion to, um, approve, um, his resignation from the board. Um, so, if I could have someone make a motion? We're very sad.
It's like, do we have to?
No, we're very sad, so, I need a motion to approve his letter of resignation, so we can move forth with the process. So, Tammy Hardy makes a motion, Sheila Samples makes a second, do we have any discussion?
We just don't like it.
So, I'd like to call for a vote at this time, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a four oh, um, vote, so the motion carries. Uh, we will be posting more information about that vacancy on our school webpage and if you have any questions, you can direct them to Mr. Brock. Um, next, that brings us down to our consent items, uh, Mr. Brock, would you like to review those?
Uh, they're just the standard things, approval of the April minutes, the treasurer's report, so we can pay bills, the superintendent, travel, the technology surplus. Uh, we have some technology that we're going to surplus, uh, Mr. Simpson and I have talked about that just a little bit. And approval of the emergency substitutes for the 24-25 school year, that falls under the new, um, regulation. Uh, with some new provisions that the state representatives have, uh, given us for subs. I think that it's okay for us to go ahead and pr- approve it, but I think we also need to look at some very strict guidelines on how we utilize that. And we'll probably also be looking at KSBA for some policy that we'll have to adopt later on. But for now, it's my recommendation we approve all consent items.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent items as discussed by Mr. Brock. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Tammy Hardy makes a second, do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a four oh vote. Um, Mr. Brock, that brings us down to the superintendent's report, would you like to give us an update?
Sure, so, I'm going to fill you in on the last standard, according to my cohort that I need to cover tonight. Which would be standard four, as I've covered all the rest of them in the previous meetings, even getting a late start, uh, which is human resources leadership. Uh, we've had, uh, been to multiple job fairs this year, uh, even have, in discussion of holding our own at some point, uh, in the fall next year and in the spring and getting an early jump on candidates. I can s- tell you this and I think, uh, everybody would agree, principals and Andrea as well. Getting our jobs posted earlier this year has given us the ability to get more candidates, higher quality candidates and fill our job vacancies a lot easier. So, that's something that we've kinda done to try to get out, uh, ahead of other districts. Uh, we are looking at a social emotional aspect of support for our teachers next year. Uh, I have a quote on that and I'll be talking to you all about that probably in June. Uh, I've talked to Amanda a little bit about it, she's sent in Mr. Cornet and some of the others, we're gonna go over that. It's actually not very expensive and it would be, uh, clinical counseling for all of our employees and I think it'd come out to like a dollar eight per employee if we did a three-year license. And they would just bill us every year, it's a little over sixteen thousand dollars for three years to provide this for our employees. That's not what's on the agenda tonight, but I was just filling you in, uh, so, that would give them clinical counseling, uh, to deal with stress, anything that happened in their lives. So, we'll discuss that a little bit more when that comes in, but that is something we're looking at for retention and employee benefits. Uh, the new teacher supports are still in place and, so, Brian is not with us tonight, but we were selected, uh, with our new teacher supports that have been done by Ms. Mays and Ms. O'Brien. Uh, Andrea has been involved, Ms. Napier's been involved, all of our coaches have been involved. But we have been selected to, uh, present at the Continuous School Improvement Summit next fall, which is a big deal and it's a big deal for our district. Uh, kudos to them and the, the hard work that they've done on that, uh, and that's to help us to grow our teachers and to help retain them as well. Next year, we will be starting our own leadership program where we will be growing our own and investing in those who want to become leaders within our district and helping them help to grow their leadership skills. And for professional development on the 23rd and 24th, we have Thoughtful Classroom coming in, which is centered around high-yield instructional strategies and engagement strategies. Uh, and it's for K-12, it will be for every, uh, teacher in the district. Uh, there's some multiple books and multiple resources, the coaches can, uh, can talk a whole lot more about that, but they absolutely love the programs. Some of it's already being implemented in classrooms for those teachers who have, were kind of, uh, ahead of the curve, our coaches have already instructed them on that. I know, uh, Mr. Yost has instructed some teachers on that as well, I have seen some of that going on in the schools and the classrooms. And we can talk about other stuff, but that covers standard four. Personnel, uh, actions, we do have a few more people that we, uh, need to hire, but for the most part, we are ahead of the curve, like I said earlier. I know there's some, uh, a couple of our teachers and I think Mr. Yost may be coming to a decision there pretty quick, there's a couple, uh, things at the middle school. Uh, one at the Estle Springs and some paraprofessionals at West Urban. Now that we have the principal in place at West Urban, congratulations to Ms. Tanya Miller, if nobody, uh, if you all didn't know that yet. Uh, she's gonna consult on those hiring, uh, hirings at West Urban since she will be taking over as principal there next year. So, that's personnel, and then enrollment, we are down just a little bit as is expected toward the end of the school year, we have filled 91.98. But that is not filling out our last, or lowest five days, we're still having around 2061. And we meet Powell and Lee and all the surrounding counties for the attendance award that ended today. So, I do not have to dress up in any other school colors and have a trophy, they have to dress up in Estle Blue and hand me a trophy. So, I say that, very proud of our school district for pulling that out, especially since we were at the very end of the school and they have a little bit more time left. Proud of our kids for getting in there, but I kept texting every day on that thread and telling principals so that I was not gonna do what? Was not wearing another school color to present a trophy, so we better win, so, very proud of that and this, uh, competition that I think we're gonna continue, uh, maybe even quarterly through next year. So, we are the first champions and we better be the reigning champions.
Continuous champion.
Uh, continuous champions. Uh, and that takes us to principals reports, I think Mr. Yost is the only one we have here and Ms. Toni Garrett Hall, she presented earlier. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Mullins, I was looking, I was scanning, uh, so, I'll turn it over to you, Donna, so you can hand it back to me.
Uh, so, principals report, first on deck is Mr. Yost from Estle County High School, take it away.
Wonderful to be with you all again, uh, this month. And, uh, if I talk slower than normal and I seem a little tired, it's because it's high school end of year tired. Um, hope to see y'all out tomorrow night, graduation at seven o'clock at the high school. Um, doors will open for families and guests at six o'clock, we're excited to celebrate the class of 2024. Um, just a couple of things for you all, um, we are in the middle of tennis regionals right now, we've had some students already advanced to state though. Um, Levi McFarland, Cage Carter, Maddie Milby and Hannah Peters have all advanced to state. Um, we also have Riley Arthur and Emma Taylor who will be advancing to nationals for FCCLA star events this year, so, really proud of them. Just found out Ms. Elizabeth Raider has also been selected as a governor scholar, so she will be joining, um, Ella Seal for Governor Scholars and Luke Hughes for Governor School for the Arts. So, we're really proud of all those juniors. Um, wanna, uh, congratulate Mason Isaacs on the junior ACT this year, he got a thirty-three, so he's joined the thirty club at Estle County High School. And last but most certainly not least, I wanna thank, actually, sorry, there's two things. I wanna thank all you board members who've been out for senior breakfast, for honors night, for the seniors. And baccalaureate, thank you all for being there, being a part of our events this week for honoring our seniors leading up to graduation. Speaking of the class 2024, uh, one of the things Mr. Brock and I talked about early on this year is setting goals for the year and I told him all year long, I said, I think ninety-two to ninety-three percent is where we're gonna be for post-secondary readiness. We were eighty-seven last year and Mr. Brock every time would say, yeah, but ninety-five would look real good. And I'm happy to say that after one more student today, and Ms. O'Brien, I'm gonna have to tell you after the meeting who it was because you're gonna do backflips. Um, you already know. Um, we had one student who passed the pre-pack, which is the industry certi- uh, industry certification for family consumer science. Which out of the one hundred and twenty-seven students from Estle County High School who will graduate this year, one hundred and twenty-one are post-secondary ready. Which means we have ninety-five point three percent, which is a school record. We're extremely proud of all of our staff, both at the high school and the ATC for all of the work that they have done with our students. But we have fifty-one students who are, uh, career-ready with high-demand industry certifications in the senior class, which is almost half of the senior class. So, um, I thank her all the time for the partnership with the ATC and the board for creating the ATC and all of that, but this, this has been a tremendous year at Estle County High School and through the support of Mr. Brock, Mr. Cornet, central office, the board, we've made some tremendous gains this year and look to keep that going into next year. So, thank you all.
Good evening, guys, thank you all once again, as I say every month, for allowing us an opportunity to come to you and share the good things that are going on at Estle Springs. There were too many pictures for me to fit onto one paper tonight, so I have a three-minute slideshow. Um, I wanted to share some of the things we've had going on in May. We did a, we really tried to kick off KSA with a lot of enthusiasm this year, you start it whenever you're ready, Jeremy, there's no music. Um, we really tried to have a lot of enthusiasm, uh, we used it as a, a boot camp, all of the students really participated, you could see some of their little heads on the wall. Um, they really dug into the theme, uh, you see Ms. Mays and I on the back of that Humvee, we had a parade where the parents came. One of the themes that we found though is that we really pushed to them how proud we already were of them and the work that they have done. But our students really, our teachers, our students really took the theme of the boot camp very seriously, you can see them accomplishing missions there in the top-left picture. Um, some of the favorites from the boot camp, um, and then from the KSA were, was this activity, remembering your why. These were notes that the students created for themselves, I love that they wanted to do this to make their dad proud, to make myself proud. My motivation is to get myself ready for college. We really talked about why we're learning and why this is such a big moment for them. Uh, we enjoyed our fifth grade transition activity at the middle school, they are always so welcoming and so prepared for us. Our senior walk, there are a couple of our seniors there that we got to, um, we love them all. I have officially, um, now had all of these kids under my eleven years at Estle Springs as principal, not only my twenty-one years here as a whole, but so proud, love the senior walk. Um, we took the teachers on a field trip to Hippie Hut, uh, that, there we have one that's younger than I am doing a little hop off the bus. Um, and also, we got to spoil all of our staff during Educator Appreciation Week, we're so thankful for our PTO and our parents and our community for helping with that. We, this year, had our first fifth grade celebration and etiquette luncheon, this was such a wonderful event where we got to talk about table manners and what it's like to go out to eat and what are some, you know, expectations at a table and the kids had a ball, they drank with their pinkies up and it was great. Um, we had our second color run this year and, um, I'm sure the parents loved us as well as the bus drivers, but it was an absolutely phenomenal event, uh, for everyone. All the kids got to participate. And wrapping it up, I think the last slide, a, a couple more, we got to celebrate Nurse Lauren, uh, which also coincides with Teacher Appreciation Week, it's Nurse Appreciation Week. We definitely couldn't make it through any day without her and we're glad that she has a, a, a great immune system and is always there for us. Um, she's the best, she really is, we're very, very thankful for Nurse Lauren. Um, we got to host our eleventh annual transportation and support staff appreciation breakfast, where we invite all transportation staff, all maintenance staff to come and eat breakfast. It's, it's the one day that I know I can eat as much gravy and biscuits as I want to. Um, and today, to wrap it up, was field day. We've had a great day at Estle Springs, we're wrapping up a great year at Estle Springs. We couldn't do what we do without your all's continued support and I want you all to know how much we appreciate the school board, our district staff, our fellow schools, our fellow principals. It is a combined event for success, uh, every year that we are able to accomplish and I appreciate all of you all.
I think Ms. Combs had something, eh? I think Ms. Combs has something.
Yeah, I skipped over her and Ms. Mullins, that's terrible.
I think Ms. Combs wanted to share some things about the ATC.
Well, I do have, um, I did the handout for the Industrial Maintenance Mechanic Level One certificate, it's been approved, it's on the books at BCTC and enrollment is open now. Um, the class, the first class will start August nineteenth through December fifteenth and I shared this in an email and I give it to everybody, so please share, we would love to see this happen. Um, there's also the Work Ready Scholarship in case someone wants to know, you know, how to pay for this. If they do not have a degree already, they qualify as well, so, they can get this, uh, cla- these classes for free. Um, so, that's what's happening.
And just so we know, and just so we're advertising, this is for our community.
Yeah.
After hours, that's part of what we, was asked for when the ATC opened, classes and certifications for our community, this is part of your, uh, opportunity to take advantage of that and get involved.
Um, the lectures are online and the lab will meet one da- one evening a week from five to eight-twenty only, so-
It's an awesome opportunity and the adults had requested that over and over. I was involved in getting the ATC from the get-go and that was one of the promises that we made. And so, I'm excited, congratulations on, um, being able to provide this and I look forward to a whole lot of people signing up and maybe even having to add another class.
Yeah, we're probably, there's other things to come, so-
And if you have any questions or you're interested in all, contact Ms. Combs, contact me, we'll get you the information that you need.
Um, so, just to add a little bit of the post-secondary readiness, um, I look back at last year's overall for the ATC and we were eighty-two point five-six with overall post-secondary ready and only seventy-six point seven-four with career readiness. And this year, we are at ninety-six point nine-four for overall and ninety-one point eight-four for career readiness.
That's excellent.
I look back at my reflective practice from last year and, um, I didn't put this goal on there, but we exceeded it, so I'm very excited. But if I look back at, um, the measures that we had, um, industry certs, we had seventy industry certs for, uh, the students. Um, EOPs, fourteen, we don't have track, but I have news for that. Um, co-op, we had thirteen co-op students and what I wanna say about the co-op students is it's growing, but out of all thirteen co-op students, they all had more than three hundred hours, which is a post-secondary readiness marker. So, e- even with that, they already had an industry cert, most, e- every single one of those had an industry cert, so they're all stacked, is pretty much what I'm saying. And all of those seniors together had forty-nine dual credits. So, it's, it's growing, it's still gonna grow, I thought last year was good, but the best is yet to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Do you have anything, Ms. Hall?
I don't really have anything, no. I'll, tomorrow we do have preschool promotion celebrations, we start eight-thirty, we'll be at the end of the day, if anybody wants to come over, each class is prepared a song, so it's fifteen minutes of cuteness if you need that tomorrow, it'll be cute, but that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Um, so, that brings us down to, uh, our board member forum, does anyone have anything they'd like to share?
I just wanna say thanks for a good breakfast from high school this morning and all the hard work that cafeteria ladies and everybody that works there did and thanks for assistance, Guarantee Bank for coming to serve as they always help and do and to Mr. Burnett for playing the backpops for us this morning, that was a wonderful, wonderful thing this morning.
And last, uh, the, uh, senior awards night was amazing. I mean, we have wonderful students, amazing students, all around this senior class, you know, I wanna commend them and their parents.
I second that, I would just like to say, just, it's a great time to be an engineer, there's so many exciting things that are going in our dis- on in our district. Um, a- and, we, it's been a celebration the entire year, I know the end of the year typically is the time to celebrate, but it seems like every time we come together on the board for a meeting, we are celebrating the success of one of our schools or one of our students or groups of our students. So, I am beyond proud, um, I, I, I think it's wonderful, I think we're heading in a great direction and I'm so excited to see all of this and to be a part of everything. And like Ms. Combs said, I think the best is yet to come.
Oh, I agree, I'm, I'm very proud of our team, I'm very proud of everything that's been accomplished and all of their hard work this year. Uh, Mr. Yost didn't tell you when I told him ninety-five, a little bit, uh, but I told him I thought that it was accomplished, he could definitely accomplish it and, and just not just the high school, across the district, we've seen growth. Um, a little bit off the topic, on a personal note, uh, for all of you who have, uh, kept my family in your thoughts and prayers over the last couple of weeks, it's very much appreciated. Uh, that's, I mean, I just, you all don't know how much it has been appreciated, so thank you.
Mr. Brock, you continue to be in our prayers and, um, we appreciate you and your leadership so much. And one other thing that I would like to just mention, I would like to throw out big kudos to Christie Crowe and the Flow Party. Um, I've heard so many people say what a great time that was and I know that we got a couple of phone calls back from Alabamie Jacks that congratulated us and told us how much they appreciated how well-behaved our kids were, there was nothing broken, everything was neat and clean and in place when our students left. No drama. No drama. So, a big shout-out to Christie Crowe, I think she raised maybe fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars, um, and that was through community su- support, partnerships with, um, businesses in the community and a lot of blood, sweat, tears and hard work, so, thank you all for that. Um, anything else? Anything else?
Just, I'll, and just to continue because we have to be moved by the thirty-first of May, so, all that's finally official and I'm, I'm glad to, to be here, so. But it's gonna be a short turnaround window, but we'll get, get it done, so, thank you all.
Do we have any public comments, Mr. Simpson? Okay, with that, I need a motion to adjourn and I need a second, Sheila and Tammy, all in favor? Thank you all, thank you for your attendance.